Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 2nd meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Agajanian.
President.
Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Arda Najarian.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This evening, as we gather to select a new mayor, we take pause and give thanks for the many blessings which we appreciate as stakeholders and residents of our wonderful city. We give thanks for all of our leaders from past to present and pray for the success of the one who will be selected to lead this council and be the mayor of our jewel city in the coming year. Famous singer entertainer Dolly Parton once wrote in her autobiography that, "If your actions create a legacy that inspires others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, then you are an excellent leader." No truer words can be spoken about the importance of our city's leaders because together as one council, they work to create a legacy for our future generation. Let us pray that our new mayor will inspire others to dream more, learn more, and do more so we can all become more as one city. We also pray this evening for our brave men and women in our nation's armed forces who make great sacrifices so we may enjoy the freedoms which afford us this special opportunity this evening. May they be safe from harm, and we pray for peace here and throughout the world tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the April 2nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, March 29th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next?
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 9th, 2019.
Yes, sir, Mr. Golanyan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. For the meeting of April 9th, 2019, there is no agendized item for the Glendale Housing Authority. However, that afternoon commencing at 3:00 p.m., there'll be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority with one item on the agenda: A report from Finance regarding creation of Glendale Municipal Financing Authority to assist in refinancing the 2,000 variable rate demand certificates of participation. And that evening, commencing at 6:00 p.m., there are three items under the consent agenda of the City Council meeting, starting with General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding adoption of specifications and plans for the Glendale Heights Tank Replacement Project, followed by General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding adoption of plans and specifications, and advertising for bids for two types of as-needed field services for the Grayson Power Plant, off-site and on-site repair of water system pumps, and Shoal Canyon Compression Facility, followed by General Manager of the Water and Power regarding Amendment Number Two to Contract Number C-106642 with One Industrial Repair Company for as-needed field and factory services for the Grayson Power Plant and Shoal Canyon Compression Facility. On the adoption of ordinances, an ordinance for adoption amending Title II, 15, and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to deterring the unpermitted demolition of historic resources and including minor changes and clarification of other code sections. On the action items, report from Public Works regarding ordinance for introduction amending Chapter Eight of the Glendale Municipal Code 2017 related to construction and demolition debris diversion program to comply with the 2016 California Green Building Standard Code, followed by Director of Community Development regarding Glendale Burbank Regional Streetcar Feasibility Study progress update. Finally, Director of Community Development regarding consideration of resolution of intention to disestablish the Adams Square Business Improvement District and all of its activities.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item is the selection of a new mayor. The business before this council is the selection of a mayor. As the chair of this process, I will now entertain nominations for this office.
Before you...
Before we do that, there is actually one presentation from State Senator Anthony Portantino's office, as well as the mayor's remarks.
Thank you, sir. Should the presentation go first, or is there any rule listed there?
Hi, Arda.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. My name is Arda Chakian. I am Senator Portantino's district representative in the city of Glendale. On behalf of Senator Portantino, I'd like to present our outgoing Mayor Sinanian with a certificate of recognition. Thank you for your outstanding contributions to our community during your term as mayor. Your dedication in the many leadership roles you have undertaken is an inspiration to all those who have worked alongside you. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, so, before we select a new mayor, I'd like to make some short remarks and then yield the seat to the new mayor. And it's tempting, I have a long speech, but I decided, on advice of a good friend, not to read a speech, but just to talk to you, our residents, our guests, and sum up the last year. The last year has really been a remarkable year of success and prosperity. I want to thank everyone, all of our residents, for, first of all, of course, giving me the chance to serve on this council, and I want to thank my colleagues for bestowing the greatest honor that any Glendale resident can have, which is to serve as its mayor. And council has bestowed this honor upon me twice now, for which I'm grateful. In April of last year, upon becoming mayor, I announced or promulgated an agenda which consisted of the following. Number one, expand our low-income and workforce housing. Number two, expand the economy, especially with the tech initiative, strengthen the downtown as a major business area. Number three, bring modern transit to Glendale through efforts like the Glendale Streetcar and Icarapit Transit. Number four, bring to fruition Artsakh Paseo Project, thus adding open space to our downtown and activating an otherwise stagnant area of our city. Number five, deeper cooperation with Glendale Unified School District, specifically using green space that they already have in order to increase our own after school hours. Number six, return City Council on your neighborhoods concept, which was not happening for a year prior to that. Number seven, look towards sustainability and our environmental health in dealing with the Grayson Repowering. Number eight, transform one of the less-attended libraries into a children's library and learning center. Number nine, seek a charter review. And number 10, initiate Mayor's Nonprofit Summit. And I'm very happy to report that with the exception of item number nine, which is the charter review, which is something that I will pursue as a council member, all of these projects either came to fruition or had significant progress. First, the low-income housing issue. This is probably an issue that none of you are strangers to because either you know someone that's experiencing the difficulties associated with it, or you know about us working on it, and I'm sure anyone, regardless of their economic status, regardless of their job and profession, education, everyone understands how serious this dilemma is and how committed this council is to working to remedy the situation as much as possible. We on this council certainly take it very seriously, as was reflected by the steps that were taken in the last year, whether it was the rent control slash right-to-lease ordinance which passed quite recently, or whether it's seeking additional funds to make low-income housing or more affordable housing possible in Glendale, we're on it every day, and we have been on it for the last year. We are seeking state funding, federal funding, our own tax measures to augment whatever monies there are already, and to make sure that we can build as much affordable housing as possible. With the passing of Measure S, we have really acquired a serious tool with which we can take some active steps in expanding our affordable housing numbers. I believe Measure S, or the funding for Measure S starts flowing as of April 1st, so congratulations to all of us. That was a very responsible step that this council took, and we took it unanimously, fully realizing that it's an unpopular thing to do. Anytime you raise taxes, it's a bad thing. But we had been put in a situation where not doing it was the irresponsible thing to do, because we knew that there were county or state initiatives that were on the horizon which would bring the tax percentage, the tax rate, to what it is now with Measure S. However, as opposed to Measure S, we would only benefit cents on a dollar had we allowed for the county or the state to implement their tax measures. We didn't. We had the courage to tell our residents, tell them the truth, explain to them why it was important, why it was important to keep all the money in Glendale, and we achieved that. We project approximately $30 million in the next year and perpetually, which this council will use for the most sensitive and the most urgent needs of our residents. At this time, this council believes that low-income housing is that most urgent need, and we're going to do that. The economy is doing well in Glendale. Our vacancy rates are very low, and as painful as that sounds, the fact that our rents are high and our home values are high as well is a reflection of how well Glendale is doing. And that's, to some degree, thanks to the efforts of this city council, of the city staff, that has kept the city clean, has kept the city safe, has kept the business environment very friendly. Our tech initiative, something that I proposed during my first mayorship, has been very successful. We had our third tech week last year, gearing up for our fourth tech week. I hope you join us, I believe, September 14th through 19th. Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong? No, I got that right. September 14th, we're going to have our fourth tech week. Our tech sector is really booming. More and more companies are moving to Glendale. Those that are in Glendale are expanding. If you remember 2017, February 2017, Nestle was moving out of Glendale, and it seemed like it was the end of the world for our economy because potentially 2,500 jobs were being lost, and there was going to be an entire building that was going to be vacant. And during our, when we released our February 1st, 2017 press conference, we specifically stated that we believe that this space is going to be filled by tech-related progressive companies, and that has happened. The Nestle building, as of last Monday, is the Service Titan building. We did a press conference with all of City Council presence, and a local company that was created in Glendale, that's growing in Glendale, that is going to stay in Glendale, and is looking to employ as many as 1,000 engineer programmers by the end of the year is going to occupy most of that space, not to mention the other tech companies like Disco that are in that building, the Los Angeles Children's Hospital that's in that building. So we have really no concern as long as we keep working hard to make sure that the environment in our city, the business environment, is friendly and that companies want to come here and not leave here. Modern transit, modern transit is a serious issue in Glendale. Often, when our residents complain about traffic in downtown, the traffic is not so much a function of the number of units that exist there, but a function of not sufficient mass transit. And unfortunately, our predecessors in the '80s, in the '90s missed the boat when LA was planning its subway grid, its mass transit grid, and we didn't really put Glendale on that map on time. So we're now trying to catch up. So through the efforts of all of City Council, whether it's Councilmember Arda Najarian on the MTA Board, Councilmember Vartan Garpetian on the SCAG Board, whether it's my chairmanship of Icarapit Transit and SCAG's Transportation Committee, we're doing our best to make sure that in the foreseeable future, there's mass transit in Glendale. Meanwhile, we have specific projects that are already on the map, such as the BRT from North Hollywood to Burbank, that's pretty close to actually being completed. And we'll continue those efforts. The long-term projects, we have to make sure that year after year we stay on point and push them through. The Artsakh Paseo Project, we all witnessed last year, the renaming of a two-block portion of Maryland Street and renaming it to Artsakh. Artsakh, obviously, is something that's associated with the Armenian-American community. It's part of, a geographic part of the Republic of Armenia, and it is the first Armenian place name in the city of Glendale, a city where nearly 40% of the population is of Armenian heritage. And that was a wonderful event. But more so, we are on the way to have something very wonderful on Artsakh Paseo, on those two blocks. We've hired a company. We're working together to make sure that Artsakh Paseo is one of the most active portions of downtown Glendale, and thereby we're going to have a promenade, hopefully, that's going to create open space for our residents and activate a portion of the city that's been pretty stagnant for the last 15, 20 years. Deeper cooperation with Glendale Unified School District. We've largely achieved that through our efforts to jointly use school parks, school fields, to make sure that after school, when the schools don't need them as much, our residents can use them, our children can use them. And we already have the precedent for it in the form of the Pacific soccer field, the Pacific school soccer field, which is widely used since its opening, ironically, when I was mayor for the first time. That's when we opened it, and now we're working to finalize the same project with Wilson and Sarito's Elementaries. And upon the success of those projects, we're going to expand this cooperation. We're also looking to cooperate on the renovation and expansion, hopefully, of Glendale and Hoover High Schools pools, swimming pools, because our city's facing a serious shortage of swimming space, swimming pools, and those schools' pools provide, you know, an existing venue for swimmers for our city. City Council on your neighborhoods, I'm not going to say much about that. It's back. We held City Council on your neighborhood meetings in various parts of the city. I hope that this tradition is ongoing because it's a unique opportunity to make sure that our city and our city leadership are accessible to our residents, and we go to them sometimes and don't always expect them to come to us. I hope this tradition continues as it has in the past. With respect to the Grayson Repowering, last year, we again took a responsible step of requesting that the staff go back and look at a more sustainable, a more environmentally friendly project, version of the project, the repowering of Grayson. And in that process, we've involved all the community groups, all the individuals that have a stake in it, and I'm certain that when this is brought back to council, it's going to be a very different project. It's going to be much more environmentally healthy and friendly. It's going to be much more in tune with those very stringent requirements that are imposed on Glendale and other municipalities by the state government. We are looking to be 100% sustainable, renewable over the next less than 30 years. So we need to make sure that Grayson is repowered accordingly because we're going to spend a lot of money on that project. Libraries. Our libraries are doing really well, but specifically, I had requested that we open a children's library or take one of the less-attended libraries in our city and transform that into a children's library. And just yesterday, we did the ribbon cutting for the reopening of the Grand View Children's Library, and I hope all of you will go and check it out. It's quite nice. Yesterday, the grand opening was amazing because the library happens to be right across the street from Jefferson Elementary. It's probably three or four blocks from Balboa Elementary. It's within a mile distance of another two elementary schools, Franklin and Keppel. So it's strategically located. It's done very well. It's really nice. The resources that are going to be available there for our children are wonderful. I hope you all make use of it. I already spoke about the city charter review. That's something I'm going to have to work on as a council member. That's the one item that we didn't make any progress on over the last year. And finally, the Mayor's Nonprofit Summit. I don't know if a lot of people thought this was something worthwhile when I announced it, but I assure you, if anyone attended the March 8th nonprofit summit, the first ever Mayor's Nonprofit Summit, you'd be amazed. At the turnout, at the enthusiasm, we had a capacity crowd, and folks were very excited. For the first time, it seemed like our nonprofits felt like they were being paid attention to, and we had a vested interest in their success. And it's truly the case. We do have a vested interest because they do serve an important function in our city, and they fill a vacuum that otherwise governmental agencies cannot fill. So for that reason, I'm very happy that my colleagues all came by and saw what a popular event that was and how many requests they must have heard from the attendees to make sure that this happens on an annual basis. The safety in our city continues to remain on the highest standard. We are still ranked as one of the top three cities in the state and one of the top cities in the country for our size. Not only are our police officers very professional in what they do, but we employ modern technologies to prevent and catch criminals. You know, I don't want to go into all the examples that I read during the State of the City, but there was a curious case where someone burglarized a home and then broke into the homeowner's car, found some strawberries there, and ate the strawberries, left the pits, or the stems, rather, and the police were able to identify that person's DNA from the stem and catch them. I mean, this is the level of expertise that we have, thanks to our DNA lab, and, you know, let that be a warning to any criminal who intends to do bad things in our city. It's not a place to...
Don't give up the secrets, Mr. ...
Well, you know, no, let them know. This is preventative policing as opposed to punitive policing. Also very important is our police department's interaction with our community. Our community really loves its police. I witnessed it myself, not from a sort of a city council level, but just being with a large group of people and seeing how respected our police are and how that respect and love is actually mutual. Last April, many of you will remember, there was a velvet revolution taking place in the Republic of Armenia, and there were large demonstrations happening in Glendale, the largest in Glendale's history. And our police, for over two weeks, were engaged in crowd, I don't know what to call it, crowd control, chaperoning. It was actually so civilized and so nice that, I don't want to call it policing, but a demonstration of upwards of 10,000 more people every time was peaceful, nothing was ever broken, absolutely no indication of any violence. It's remarkable. And even our police were remarking and stating that they're amazed at how peaceful these events are. And all I remember is folks walking into convenience stores and buying water and bringing it to the police officers. It was just very surreal. But that shows the sentiment that there is towards our police department, and that's well-deserved. Our fire is still outstanding department. We have a new fire chief who is going to do an outstanding job, no doubt, because we voted for him. But again, our residents are used to the highest standards in this city. Our pavements are perfect, our roads are well-maintained. Just today, we were joking that when, it's not a joke, it's true, when you leave Glendale, when you cross that line, I don't know, I don't want to say where you cross into, but when you cross that line, just from the quality of asphalt, from the pavement, you know that you've left Glendale, you're in a different city. I mean, that's something to be proud of. And that's what we intend to continue doing in Glendale. I want to thank my colleagues for giving me this chance. It's been an honor to work with you through hard times and good times, and I want to thank staff for doing an outstanding job, for always being responsive and making sure that our cities maintained well. I want to thank all of you for electing me and giving me this opportunity, because had I not been on council, I wouldn't be doing this. And I also want to wish the incoming mayor will find... And I also want to wish the incoming mayor, we'll find out who that will be, but wish the new mayor best of luck, best of cooperation with the rest of council, because we need to work together for the benefit of our residents and our city. Otherwise, nothing gets done. So it's all about working together and making sure that jointly we can do the best. So, thank you very much.
So with that, we will now entertain motions, nominations for the office of mayor. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Clerk, at the risk of sounding, I would nominate Ara Najarian for mayor.
Any other nomination? Are you going to run this? Are there any? Yeah, we're on track. Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor? Going once. Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed to a roll call. Now, the way we can do this is, since there is only one nomination, you may just say aye, or whatever you choose. Council members Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
All right. I now declare Councilmember Ara Najarian the duly-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
Thank you, everyone. My first act as mayor would be to present this wonderful plaque to our outgoing mayor to congratulate him for the fine job that he did in this past year. Whoops. I want everyone to see it. Wonderful piece. To Mayor Zare Sinanian. Coincidentally, much of what outgoing Mayor Sinanian mentioned is also mentioned in my remarks. And I think that goes to show that we are, not just he and I, but the council as a whole, are of the same mind in many items, and that is, what is best for the city of Glendale and how can we make our life and the quality of lives for our residents even better. So are you ready to go? Here we go, everybody. Another round, another chapter in the city of Glendale's history. I'd like to thank my family for showing up. My wife, Palmira. My mom and dad, Mary and Vargas. I'm not going to give your bio, Mom. I know you want to buy, but... Read Glendale Hills magazine if you want to see about my mom and dad. Palmira's mom, Norma, and her nephew, Dylan, and my brother, Armin, and wife, Naira, my other brother, Rafi, and his wife, Arda, my nephew, Shant, my son, Alexander, who looks like a lawyer already, he graduates from UCLA in just a month or two from law school, my good friends, my son, Christopher, who's streaming this live at Xavier University in Cincinnati, Ohio. Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. Thank you for supporting me. My dear friends, I can go on and on, but thank you. Thank you for the support. Garo Gazarian, I see, is giving me the hi sign.
He was waving at me.
Oh.
Sorry, he was waving at me.
Okay, Garo. All right, now I know how you feel. I truly do want to thank Mayor Sinanian for his leadership this past year. We tackled some very tough issues, but you kept us going in the right direction all the time. And in your full State of the City speech and your abbreviated version today, I think you should all be amazed, as I am the second time, as to how many great things have happened in this city in just the past year. I want to thank my colleagues for selecting me as mayor this year. If anyone is counting, this is my first, my fourth time as mayor. I was first elected to the council in 2005. The job really doesn't get any easier because the city gets more complex as we go forward in time, and the job also gets a little bit more complex also. And if you can imagine back in 2005, what kind of city did we have in Glendale? A lot of people call it a sleepy, sleepy city. There wasn't much going on. But now, you can see, it's full of hustle and bustle, eighteen-hour days, great retailers, vibrant downtown. We certainly have changed in the last fourteen years. Now, we don't have a set rotation at the mayor's position. However, we try to be fair and bring each council member to the position of mayor at the right time in his or her term that is best for the city. I hope to help and mentor the next mayor, will be here in a year, and help that person be the best mayor that he or she can be in 2020. Being mayor is largely ceremonial. You cut ribbons, you kiss babies, you throw out the first pitch at the ballgames. But the mayor presides over the council meeting, quells uprisings in the chambers. And you've been here, folks. Sometimes they get unruly. The mayor is the face and the voice of the city, both inside and outside our city limits, around the globe, extending to Los Angeles, Sacramento, Washington, Mexico City, Yerevan, Moscow, Tokyo, Seoul, and even further. I'll make sure that each of our meetings is run in an orderly fashion, that each of my colleagues has an ample opportunity to raise issues and question the positions brought by other colleagues on council, by staff, and the public. And the public that takes time out of their busy day, evenings, and sometimes the early mornings to speak to council will be given the dignity and respect that they are owed. And I may at times remind speakers that dignity and respect is very much a two-way street. A personal attack on any one of us is an attack on us all. I'm talking about personal attacks, not policy disputes. A threat, and we had a threat last year, ladies and gentlemen, a threat against any one of us will not be tolerated, and I will lead the charge to defend my colleagues and staff against any such aggression. We face serious issues ahead in the next twelve months. Securing the energy future of our residents is the biggest one we face. And I appreciate the environmental, the climate change, and the air quality issues entwined in this issue. We must keep in mind, however, that we do not have the luxury of scale, the luxury of time, and the luxury of transmission opportunities, talking about electrical transmission opportunities, that a city like Los Angeles has. They are not us, and we are not them. And in the end, let's not fool ourselves. L.A. is out for L.A.'s interests each and every time, and they will steamroll Glendale any chance that they get. I will not let the city fall into a position where we and our residents are vulnerable to any other city, large or small, near or far. I will be proposing a series of election reform measures. I simply can't erase what I saw last election. I just simply can't let it be. I want to make sure that every voter is able to choose and select the candidate or candidates of their choosing without undue influence by campaign workers who enter their home. In South Carolina, an entire congressional election was thrown out because of ballot harvesting. Now, our rules in California may be somewhat different, but I will ask my colleagues at budget time to increase the budget of our city clerk for the education and enforcement of the election laws. Too many times, council members receive calls and take meetings and receive correspondence from individuals who are friends or acquaintances but actually represent powerful companies or industries. I want to implement a lobbyist registration where the city attorney will take information from the person wishing to contact council. The lobbyists must disclose their relationships. They must disclose how much they're being paid to be a lobbyist. It's transparency for the public, for the council members, and for staff. And years ago, I've brought forward campaign contribution limits. At that time, someone could write a check for fifty thousand dollars and give it to a candidate. I brought about campaign finance reform. Those checks could be given the day of a vote, anytime during the four-year term of an elected official. I want to continue the effort to bring greater transparency and trust in our government process. I would like to see some additional ethics reform. I want to see stricter disclosure of relationships for the applicants for government entitlements for their contractors and their employees. Now, four years ago, the Prime Minister of Japan and the President of the Republic of Korea entered into an agreement concerning the comfort woman issue. The folks in Korea said, oh, this was an anomaly. The president, Park Gun-hye, from Korea was impeached for other offenses. And they said it was an anomaly in Korea. But just last year, their new president, President Moon Jae-in, reaffirmed Korea's commitment to the agreement. And for several years, all of us on council have been deluged with representatives from both of these countries with the spoken or the unspoken purpose to address the comfort women issue and the comfort women statute. And it feels like we're being pulled in a tug-of-war with friends on both sides. I would like to invite the council generals from both countries to meet in Glendale and to publicly affirm the accords their respective president and prime minister entered into four years ago. Korean and Japanese interests have intersected here in Glendale, and we cannot ignore that fact. I want to ensure the benefits of a warm relationships between all of us and to set a path forward with both countries. I'd like to revive our sister-city programs. I'll be traveling to Tlalcepachi in the state of Jalisco, Mexico, to meet with the mayor and council in the very near future, and I will invite my colleagues to travel with me, to rekindle our relationships, and to enjoy the Mexican culture. Jalisco is the home of tequila and mariachis, so I think we'll have a good time there.
And chivas.
And chilies.
Chivas.
Chivas, the Socrates, chivas. We have a great year for transportation ahead of us, and as a member of the Metro Board, I'll push for Glendale's interests as I have for the last decade. As the mayor mentioned, we have a BRT, a Bus Rapid Transit Route, that is being refined right now, and it will connect Glendale to the rail system of Metro. We'll be able to take a one-seat stop to Pasadena and get on the Gold Line and either go further into the San Gabriel Valley, all the way out to Claremont, or take that Gold Line into Union Station. And if you go westward, we can go through Burbank to the North Hollywood Red Line Station and take that Red Line through Hollywood again to Union Station. Once you hit Union Station, the county is at your doorstep with the Expo Line and the rail to the airport, to Long Beach, et cetera. I look forward to finally completing our B-line maintenance facility. That's a very important part of our local transportation system, where our B-line buses are serviced and fueled, and probably, I think we're going to be having an RFP coming out as soon as that is done. I'm going to be working to help green our fleet of vehicles. City of Glendale has many vehicles that we use to perform our services, passenger vehicles, trucks, service vehicles. We're going to be greening that fleet of vehicles with electric and alternative fuels. As vice chairman of Metro Link, I will continue my advocacy as well, trying to develop more rail between L.A. Union Station, City of Glendale, Burbank, and Burbank Airport. In fact, we are in serious discussions to locate a new train station either on Sonora or Flower, which will be adjacent to the G C Three Creative Campus. That's the neighborhood where we have Disney and DreamWorks, and I'm sure that many of their employees will be making use of that station when it's built. I want to make sure we have new first-mile and last-mile opportunities. First mile and last mile means that last mile to get you to work once you're dropped at a transit stop, and the first mile to get you from work to that transit station, and then from the transit station, home. And there's different ways of doing that, including subsidized taxis, which will give very low rates between the train station and downtown. It's not a new concept. Other cities are doing it. We heard about it at SCAG, and it's time Glendale also implements such a thing. I think the mayor also mentioned a streetcar, and we're going to have a streetcar feasibility study coming up next week, if I'm not mistaken. And we're going to see how soon we can bring back a piece of Glendale's history, bring it back to life. Now, funding has always been the biggest hurdle, but I've just heard from some foreign investors who are interested in building, operating, and maintaining a streetcar line through Glendale. This is a game changer because we were always thinking we'd have to wait for Metro funding to come in, and we were talking about years where we would have ninety candles on our birthday cake by the time that happened. This could be done in the next decade, or even sooner, if we can come to appropriate agreements. Now, needless to say, all these transportation routes, especially from Union Station up, are being done in partnership with the Eco Rapid, and the Eco Rapid is chaired by Mayor Sinanian, and the board members, Mr. Garpetian and Mr. Agajanian, are right there. So it's with this synergy that we have, we're covering many bases here in Glendale. We're going to make great things happen in transportation. And the mayor talked about the streets. I want to make sure that our streets are still smooth after these big rainstorms. There's a bunch of potholes popping up, and I'll be happy to give task orders to our new Public Works Director when he gets in. Let's fill all those potholes. And I don't know what you're doing on Bram Boulevard, but we had a smooth surface, and I saw them digging it up this last week and causing all sorts of mess. Let's make sure that that road is returned to its pristine, smooth condition when they're done. And I'm sure Councilmember Devine will agree with me that nothing destroys our quality of life more than those noisy, gas-powered leaf blowers.
Righto.
So, I would like to investigate, using the resources that were brought before us last month by the AQMD, to get some of the electric-powered, battery-powered leaf blowers to just cut that noise out. It is the most disturbing noise, and the fumes and the dust that it creates, it's really a hassle. So let's try and improve our quality of life that way. Our housing affordability crisis has not been solved, but our new inclusionary housing ordinance certainly helps. I don't think the right-to-lease ordinance really took us to where we wanted to go. So I'd like to work with my colleagues to finalize plans to create a subsidy program to the most needy of our residents. I am not interested in protecting high-paid executives with rent, from the rent increases or to subsidize them, only those that are most at risk. I'd like to schedule a joint meeting with our colleagues at the Glendale Community College. They are a great institution. We've been somewhat out of touch with them. I used to be a member of their Board of Trustees. Recently, I arranged for a planetarium visit to be put on our calendars and be scheduled. Hopefully, we can follow it up with a joint meeting. Hopefully, we can follow it up with a joint meeting. Now, the La Crocena Town Council serves as an advisory board to Supervisor Catherine Bargen, Bargher. We always have issues concerning our adjacent communities. Roadway signs and traffic issues and development. I would like to have a joint meeting with them as well. It's too much of us versus them, and if you listen to some of them talk, even those that live in the Glendale part of La Crocena don't consider themselves part of the city. Let's bring them back in and include our friends in the unincorporated areas and see if we can start working together and discussing some of the issues that are important. I'd like to work with our friends at GUSD, again, as the mayor mentioned, to see how we can help them realize a new competition swimming pool that would not only serve our students but our entire community as well. Pools get incredible use. Our Pacific Park Pool is used almost from dawn to dusk in the summer, even past dusk. So if we can help our school district friends with some of the funding issues and open it up to city use, I think it'd be a great idea. We're going to be beginning work on the long-awaited Fremont Park renovation. I look forward to that. That's been a long time in the making. I will continue to support the nonprofit summit that Mayor Sinan Yan initiated last month. Folks, we are blessed to live in a great city. It's a premier city. We got that way by working together to create the vision of a jewel city. And I put us up against any city in the West, head-to-head. I think we'll come out on top. We've got great residents. We've got great staff. We've got great leadership, if I do say so myself, everyone on the dais, and our executives. Let's forge ahead, all of us, this year for a greater future for Glendale. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Mr. Clerk, the next item?
Next item is items including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience may request separate consideration, may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Move the item.
I have a motion and a second. Any objections? Let's take a roll call on that.
Councilmembers Agajianyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpet Yan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinan Yan?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Okay, let me start with the mayor. Former mayor?
Former mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been brought to my attention that in downtown area, downtown, we have the same noise control ordinances that are basically in existence throughout the city. Now, our overarching goal, of course, is to make sure that our neighborhoods are quiet and peaceful, but it seems like our stated goal of activating downtown and having the same pretty stringent rules that apply to the downtown area as those in the residential areas doesn't necessarily coincide, it doesn't jive. So can we have a report on that? I just want to see, because I'm hearing that businesses that we encourage to move to downtown, like Rust Bonds, and venues that may have live music once in a while are actually being forced to stop functioning after 10 o'clock, and that just, again, that doesn't go along with the stated goal of having an active downtown. So can we get a report as to what the state of affairs is?
We can. I was going to say Mayor Sinan Yan. Yes, Councilmember Sinan Yan, we can do that. If there's a second on the council to bring such a report back, we'd be happy to bring that back.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Garpet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations. I attended the League of California Cities, I'm on the Transportation Commission, and before our commission meetings, they give us a briefing on what's going on in the state. There are several housing bills of concern, they're called, that are floating around, and I think we need to keep track of them and voice our opinion one way or the other, because most of them are very, very, it takes the local control away. A B 1279, it says, I'm just going to mention them and read one or two items in each bill. There's so many items in each bill, but these are the important ones. It says, "We require by right approval for up to 100 units and 55 feet if the project meets affordability requirement and site limitations." So it would be 55 feet and 100 units. A B 1568, it says, "Basic maintenance and road repair needs." This is the SB one funding. If we do not meet our Reno numbers, they are going to take those fundings away, and I believe it's like $5 to $6 million a year for our share of those funding. So we need to be looking after that bill. A B 1763, "Density Bonus Affordable Housing Bill." It says, "It would greatly expand existing density bonus law to allow developers to receive a density bonus up to 80% and four additional concessions if 100% of the project units are affordable to low-income households." Right now, with the SB 1818, it's 35%, but this is pushing it up to 80%. SB four, this is very interesting. "It would require up to fourplexes on vacant lots in a single-family neighborhoods by right housing approvals." That means if you have a vacant lot in a single-family area, you can build a fourplex on it. So these are coming. SB 13, "Would cap or limit impact fees and other mitigation fees." These are for the ADUs, accessory dwelling units. SB 50, which is the winner's bill, this is something that we really have to be looking out for, "Would require cities to allow development up to 55 feet and unlimited density within one-half mile of major transit stop," and it doesn't specify as to what that major transit stop is. "Would require cities to allow housing projects that adhere to existing height limitations, unlimited density within one-half mile of major transit stop." And one of the most important points in this bill is, "Would limit single-family-only zoning." Let me repeat that. "Would limit single-family-only zoning by allowing housing projects that adhere to the existing height limitations, unlimited density in single-family zone neighborhoods near high-quality public schools and jobs." So what that means is, if you comply with the height restrictions, you can build as many units as you want in your single-family neighborhood lot, as long as you're close to, it says, "near high quality," and when it says "near," it doesn't identify what that is. And that's all over the city. It says almost the entire city, and it says, "near the high-quality public schools and jobs." "Would limit or eliminate parking requirements." And "Would award density bonus, lock concession, and incentives." So these are the bills that we need to, and the last one is SB 330, that's very interesting. Housing Crisis Act 2019, that the cities would not be able to downzone, impose parking requirements, increase impact fees, apply any fees to affordable housing, impose a housing moratorium, Mr. Najarian, and impose design standards that are, establish a maximum number of conditional use permits, on and on and on. Because the governor wants to build 3.6 million, 3,600,000 units by 2025, and the only way of doing it is take all the local controls away. So these are the bills that I want to bring up and mention, that, you know, every time we go to these meetings, we have to bring reports back as to what's going on in the state, and that's what we do at these meetings and conventions that we go to. It's various, you know, jam-packed information, but I think we need to follow all of them. So we will oppose them if it doesn't work with our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So let's agendize that, then, and decide if we want to take a, if it's the right time to take a position.
Yeah, I think we need to just monitor them at this time, and when it comes for, before it goes to the floor for vote, we can voice our opinion through the League of California Cities, through SCAG, through ICA, and every other contract cities. So that all are watching these groups. We have to join them and voice our opinion with them.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Devine?
I have the honor this week to attend a awards event for Shane's Inspiration Parks, and they're renaming themselves the Reimagined Parks. And these are parks that all children, whether disabled or not, can enjoy. And because of Nora Yucubian, working with City Council, we will be breaking ground for our own Shane's Inspiration Park next week. And she was honored by this organization as the Community Leadership Award. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we thank Nora Yucubian. She works with the YMCA and the ARS and other organizations, and she does a lot of work for her homeland, Armenia. It was a wonderful event, and can't wait till next week when we break ground for our own reimagined park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So it's not Shane's Inspiration anymore?
They're changing it to Reimagined. Reimagined, yes.
By the way, for the public to know, because some people asked me as to why I wasn't there, and for public to know that we had issues with our calendars, I mean, I had issues with my calendars, and it was not on my calendar, that's why I didn't, but I heard it was a great event, and we're looking forward to reimagine.
Were we invited?
I do not know, but it was not on my calendar.
You were all invited. I checked. I checked.
But no, I'm sure we were invited, but it wasn't on my calendar, so just for the public to know.
Anything from staff? Okay. Let's move to the next item.
Sir Mayor, the next item would be general public comments, three-minute portion, if you wish to maintain this practice at this time, as well as community event announcements.
Let's maintain it. I have a card from Mike Mohell.
Congratulations in your new position. I hope you have a nice ride. I was here last week, again, on the finances of the Americana. I've already written three articles in your Glendale community newsletter. And last week, Mayor Sinan Yan at the time wanted to agendize it, but nobody else wanted to second the motion. Mr. Agajianyan, you didn't second it, or you did second it? Am I right? The motion? I didn't hear anybody say it.
Exactly. He can do it again, so it doesn't matter.
Right, exactly. So I'd like to address these comments to you, sir, because when you were a private citizen about 10 years ago, if you recall, you came before this council many times criticizing the Americana and its finances. You liked the idea, but not the finances. Today, we have an issue with the finances of the city, of the, excuse me, of the Americana. I'd like to be part for my community newsletter about how the finance are worked. It says, and this is from your, the, what you call?
Website?
The website, right. The rumor page, okay. It goes in part, "For example, if Mr. Caruso misses 2% in retail profits the following year, it is added to the minimum 11.75% retail profits with a total of 13.75%. That's 11.75% plus 2% equals 13.75%. Every time Mr. Caruso misses his profit, it gets added to the following year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Glendale taxpayers have never seen a dime on this arrangement, this investment plan. It is and will always be a lost investment for Glendale taxpayers." Councilman Agajianyan, I'm asking you tonight to please second the motion, because previous Mayor Sinan Yan wanted to agendize this item for public discussion. We need to know the finances of the Americana. The Glendale taxpayers invested millions of dollars. We even have a bond that we're paying off. Mr. Caruso gets richer and richer every year. It's not complicated to figure out how much money we're losing on this project and who's winning. So with that, I hope not only does Mr. Agajianyan approve agendizing the Americana for full discussion for the public, not on the website, but right here on City Council, so the viewing audience can see where our tax dollars have been going for the last 10 years. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mohell. I don't have any other cards, so we will close this portion of oral communications and move on to the next item.
7A, under adoption of ordinances, is an ordinance approving and authorizing lease of real property located at 141 South Cedar Street to All for Health and Health for All, Inc. This was introduced by Councilmember Garpet Yan on March 12, 2019.
And we discussed this last week. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I see no comments. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Agajianyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpet Yan?
Yes.
Sinan Yan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Sorry. I'm used to that batting order.
As I was, that's why I self-corrected on this second vote. Thank you.
Yes.
All ayes. Thank you.
Next item, please.
There are no other items. There's oral communications. No cards were submitted for the five-minute portion of oral communications this evening.
You've known your business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.